Okay, that's called this meeting the Hayesville Planning Commission order. First item of business is a roll call.
Green.
Here.
Hatcher.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Asia.
Present.
Weddington.
Present.
Plummer.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Hollen.
Here.
Uh, next item of business is the presentation approval of the minutes of January ninth, 2020.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstained?
Abstained.
Uh, next item of business is public hearing to consider zone change requests from AA to single A, Dorner Park, 400 West 79th Street South. In order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their opinions and present information, the Hayesville Planning Commission follows a specific procedure. A copy is available for you by the door. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. We now formally open the public hearing to consider zone change requests from double A, single family to single A, single family for the property generally located at 79th Street South. The address is 400 West 79th Street South. Staff, please present.
All right. The applicant on this is the city. We're requesting a single family to allow the park usage. It is currently zoned double A, single family, which permits parks as a conditional use. And that is how property when it's annexed is brought in as double A. And then is typically goes through a zone change for an A. And that just didn't happen right after the annexation. It is at 400 West 79th Street. Most of you may know of it as Dorner Park. It is currently a park and open space. There's soccer fields, the dog park concession stand there along with the lake. The properties to the north would be the Public Works Facility, which does have a conditional use and is zoned a single family. To the south is SF-20, which is in the county and that's residential. To the east, portions of it are adjacent to the city limits, which are a single family residential and county SF-20, single family residential. And to the west is the same, a single family for the city limit area and then SF-20 for the Sedgwick County. Water, wastewater and electricity are available in this area and the land use plan does identify it as being park and open space.
Any commissioners have questions for staff?
I did include some additional information on the criteria with the packet that I gave you today. But what, except when it was annexed, it didn't get changed. It does, the use does seem suitable to the adjacent use as it is an open area for ground. Shouldn't detrimentally affect the property that is surrounded by the single family. And some would say it might be a good buffer right there with the Public Works Facility being to the north of it. It's not currently vacant, although it was vacant for several years due to some of the flooding in there. Well, actually it was a house before. There were some flooding issues and that's why the city developed that lake to handle a lot of the drainage issues that were down south created by the city. It does conform to the land use plan, which identifies it as parks and open spaces, public facilities. And then the comprehensive plan does have the goal in it to provide a complete range of recreational facilities and services to the neighborhood and community levels. There are adequate services there. No one has contacted me about the, about this from the public. And the staff recommendation is to recommend approval of the zone change.
Are there any questions from commissioners? Okay. Now is the time for any member of the public to speak. Seeing no members of the public, I will move on. No questions for the public from the commission. Public comment is now closed for commission action on the floor is open to commission members deliberation and comments. We will discuss the following eight considerations and their applicability to the zone change request. Any discussion?
Debbie, did you have a question earlier?
If there's no discussion, then I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the zone change as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion second to approve the zone change as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on. Public hearing considered general revisions to the subdivision regulations. We now formally open the public hearing to consider the subdivision regulations for the city of Hayesville. Angie, would you present this one?
Yes. We went over most of this last week, but for the public who might be watching. This is to update the subdivision regulations to be a little more consistent with the way things are happening now and developing. We did change a lot for the flood plain and some of the streets for change. The things, I tried to highlight the changes that were requested from last week. They're either in red line or highlighted yellow. So if you want to make sure that I did include all of the ones that we discussed, it would be ready for your recommendation of approval to the council.
Angie, I found some of the things I have questions on and some are typos and things. Do you want that now or do you want?
If you have questions, yeah, if you want to send me the, or show me a copy of the typos, that way I can fix them. All right. Love it.
Okay. Starting on page seven. Five.
That's not going to jive with what we have here.
Okay, could you have, this is what I received last week. Could you have changed anything?
What I sent in the email should have been this one. It didn't have those red lines.
Okay.
You've got a copy of it here. If you want to find.
Or I thought, did I check?
Call out section and.
Okay, I could do that.
And we can see if it's.
It would be Article three, Section one, number five, C.
Okay.
Or I'm sorry, it's B. Press tense, the present tense includes the past and future tenses and the future, the present and.
Okay. I'm past.
What, were we changing that to?
I don't know. I think it probably should just be.
I don't know that there should be. Oh, and then C.
So, so it should just go to C?
Yes.
Okay.
What's next?
Article four. And this is numerical. Um, so it's Section five. And then on the next page, the numbering goes to Section seven. So from five to seven.
We've got six here.
You've got six. Okay, and then on Section nine, number.
Page seventeen in ours.
Section nine, number three, B.
Wait. She removed that. So Section nine now is.
Page fifty-two.
What's the title of that section?
Action by the Planning Commission or preliminary plat.
Okay. And it was three B?
Three B, but before that, um, just in the first paragraph under Section nine, a public discussion, I think discussions misspelled.
So is that now Section six?
It is, yes.
Which one, the, under B? Three B?
Are you helping me?
Yeah.
Section five, Article four, Section five. No, it would be.
You were talking about Section nine, which I think is now Section six, but if the text is.
Six, three B.
Six, three B. I don't see the discussion.
Oh, you said just the regu, the first paragraph?
Yeah, the second sentence.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The second sentence.
There's just one S and there should be two?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, then in B. Should, earlier I saw, um, a singular and then the plural, the S was put in parentheses. Should that be the same way also? The suggested modification or modifications?
Yeah.
And then following that in four, the same way with the modifications again, and that modification or modifications.
I think as long as it's consistent throughout, so I can go through and make them the same.
Okay, then, um. Article five, Section three. Under seven.
Section.
Article five, Section three.
Is that contents of preliminary plat?
Yeah.
It might be two now. Oh.
Yeah, that's Section two, preliminary plat, so.
Under seven.
Yeah.
C.
So we're on page twenty-two. Everybody else? Go ahead.
It says the end of that sentence, um, were required by section and there's nothing there. Should there be something?
Yeah.
Is there something now?
Yeah, I went back through and tried to, after, because of the red line, it, it was messing with me, so that's why I got rid of that, so I can try to.
Totally understand.
But I'm sure I still missed some.
And then on eight, under eight. F. But not less than, I think that's current.
Yeah.
That's fixed already.
It's already fixed. I think, oh, I think that was it. The rest of it was numerical and I'm sure you've got that all straightened out, so, yep, that was it.
Any other questions for staff? Or anyone? Now is the time for any member of the public to speak. Again, seeing no members of the public, we will move on. Public comment is now closed for commission action on the floor is open to commissioners' deliberation and comments. Same eight criteria. Any discussion?
Thank you for working on that. Must have been crazy.
That's why I need people to proofread.
I know, I understand.
No discussion?
Any changes made tonight?
Yeah, corrections.
Still second?
Yep.
Uh, we have a motion second to approve as presented with changes made here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Item C, hearing, public hearing to consider general revisions to the land use map. We now formally open the public hearing to consider revision for the land use map for the city of Hayesville. Angie, would you present this one?
Yes. This is what we discussed at the last meeting. The new configuration for the proposed Grove's and Area of Influence of Hayesville and it would be the red lines. And the blue is what it used to be, so. It does go down to ninety, what do you say, ninety-fifth? And then ninety, fifty-fifth, north fifty-fifth, west, and then to a half mile past the turnpike to the east, except for that jagged area, which is Grove here. And then along the floodway up.
So if I'm looking at this correctly, we're removing the area of Broadway and sixty-third, north of sixty-third from our land use?
It. No, that would still be going. I just should have added a red line on top of there, so that would.
Okay, so that line that drops there is incorrect?
Well, it would, it drops right here, but then it goes back up here. Does that make sense?
Draw it to get on there so I can.
It drops here because that's already within Wichita.
Yeah.
And then it goes back up here.
I guess I'm confused at why, the red is the proposed changes and the blue is the existing. It looks to me like it goes straight across from Meridian to Broadway at the mid-mile existing, which is blue. But the red drops along Broadway halfway between Seneca and then all the way over to the railroad tracks?
And that is where Wichita has already annexed.
Okay. So the blue line is incorrect.
Yeah, that blue line should disappear.
Gotcha.
We don't have great software, so.
No, I'm just clarifying if we're, it looks like we're, that would mean we're removing that from, so I wanted to make sure we were. Do you know why we went to the other side of the river in the first one?
I do not.
I guess it doesn't really make any difference. Essentially, you're drawing a line to the middle of the river, right?
Yes.
So the only real addition is that one quarter section in the southwest corner?
That's the biggest change and then just kind of reducing some of the other.
Okay, any questions for Angie?
Why was this thought of doing? Is this normal business? Is this for cost saving? Why, why are we changing this?
We, we're changing it, several years ago, Sedgwick County dropped Wichita's area of influence to go half mile past West Street and then half a mile south of eighty-seventh. We're requesting to go to the streets, ninety-fifth and then west. Because they asked us if they would like to make changes and that just seems to make sense because people are talking about developing some properties within these different areas. We want to make sure they're within our area of influence so that we can have some discussion and oversight over those areas.
That and not overreaching.
Right.
Going farther than we think we should need to, I mean, at that point, it's one, three miles out, which.
Trying to be realistic on what we can service and.
Next thing.
For the next twenty years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep, you know, on the west, what street is that on the red line?
Hoover.
What street?
No, it'd be Hoover.
Hoover?
I said west earlier, but I meant Hoover.
So it's Hoover to ninety-fifth?
Yes.
All right.
That's why I should have labeled the street.
Yeah, wouldn't this move everybody?
Any other questions? Uh, then now is the time for the members of the public to speak. Again, seeing no members of the public, we will move on. Public comment is now closed and commission action on the floor is open to commission members' comments. Any comments at all?
None.
Then I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the revisions to the land use map as presented.
Would you, sorry, would you modify your recommendation to reflect the changes to the map that we discussed tonight?
Yes, thank you.
I'll second that.
A motion in the section and a second to approve the map as presented with changes discussed tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Under new business, we have a review of the South Meridian Corridor Plan.
I forwarded the link if you wanted to read the entire document, but then I printed the executive summary and the recommendations. So I feel like those are the main things you'd want to discuss, but. And this is just the annual review to make sure these are still in line with the plans and ideals of the city at large.
Anybody have questions?
Only question I've really got is what was the determining factor for the need of this? For fifteen to thirty years out, I mean, I know that you need to plan for future growth, but what actual interest has been given to where we would want to, to allocate tax dollars for this or make this into an executable plan for the future?
Well, what this, and correct me if you think I'm wrong here, Angie. What this does is look at the whole corridor, look at how we expect it to develop and how we as a city would like it to develop. So broad stroke residential in the middle, mixed use commercial at the corners, eventually going to a three lane or a five lane section of the road, sidewalks, all of that, all in one plan so that expansion of the city as it happens is going to have to happen along Meridian. There's just nowhere else for her to go. So the idea behind the plan when it was put together was there's nothing out there now really, if you look at corridors as a whole, so if we have the ability to plan it so that it looks like it's all one thought, what do we want that to look like?
That would save money for the public in the long run by having better planning.
Yeah, so that, so that we look at, and not only for saving money, but also so that everything functions like we want it to function. So at an intersection, you know, the first two hundred feet is right in, right out drives. You don't have commercial drives. It also sets guidelines for drive spacing and a lot, a bunch of other things that makes the corridor develop so that it's expandable in the future. So some of the things that are in here, had we had something like this for the Seneca Corridor, would have solved a lot of the problems that are currently happening in the Seneca Corridor.
Right.
So opposing drives lining up the wrong way so that two people are trying to occupy the same space as they turn left, this plan, among other things, solves that problem so it doesn't occur. Drive spacing, you know, the, the drives in there are so close that oftentimes you even pull into the wrong drive because you're not sure because there's so many. This would set drive spacing minimum offsets so that they're not too close together, so that doesn't happen.
Thank you for the clarification.
I covered about a third of what this thing actually says, but that's broad strokes of the broad strokes.
My question is, this drainage project, D twenty-one, is there anything going on with that?
D twenty-one, uh, has been sitting for, well, it, it was a plan before this was put together and I don't remember what year this is from. I would guess sometime around twelve or thirteen.
It's dated, I think so.
As far as I know, D twenty-one has, yeah, so two thousand twelve dollars, debt found. As far as I know, D twenty-one is still at the exact same spot it has been since two thousand twelve. And it's, I don't know how in-depth this goes, but if I recall, it's a county drainage project that was incorporated into city plans to take water out of the south end of country lakes. If that's that subdivision there and take it from there, bring it back to Meridian and then put it in roadside ditches along Meridian to get south of, I believe eighty-seventh street? Well, maybe ninety-five, ninety-fifth street, then turning west. So it's, it's a big, multi-mile plan that has not been implemented yet, but.
So it's something that can greatly affect this thing on what they're going to do.
It could, especially if the, if the plan does eventually bring that ditch to Meridian because it's going to affect the right of way along Meridian.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. These are all good questions.
And I didn't really know the background on that one, so I was good. I have yet to find a copy, so.
Of D 21?
Yeah.
I don't.
Well, I mean, there were.
You know what? I don't know that I've ever actually seen a copy.
I mean, I know it's a county project.
Yeah. We maybe should request that to have on file.
Yeah.
So will this general plans supersede any other plans that are, that are currently on the table now?
This, and again, if you don't agree, speak up. I think this acts as a guideline for how we want the corridor to progress, but as individual things come in, this is what we should start with and then tailor what's coming into each individual site. So broad strokes, if we can get something close to this, that's what would be ideal. But if something doesn't exactly fit with this, this is what we want. But if we can't make it happen, we need to get close to this or have a reason to not conform to this.
Okay.
Signage law in this area is under different city ordinance, I assume?
We do have a sign ordinance.
But it's not separate for this corridor? That's, that was your question, right?
My concern would be a business moving in there and putting up pre-pickney on signs.
I think that would be just like if you were on the city.
Signage, yeah.
Signage, okay.
The only thing really that is different than what is proposed in here that has been done is since this was produced, the county has come in and made Meridian a four lane rather than a two lane with ditches for a significant portion of that corridor. That wasn't an option in this. So I don't know if we need to have some sort of consideration for a four lane instead of a three or five?
And they did add the pedestrian path.
Yeah.
You're talking about from, from Grand down to 79th?
Uh, when this was produced, I think everything south of 55th was two lane.
Well, this talks about the north section, the center section, and I would assume the south section.
Sorry, I need to read that.
The south section of 71st. Yeah, I think, I think you are correct. It is two lane pavement. South of 55th.
Sorry, I'm reading this paragraph on page seven that pointed out. Okay. All right.
So on the, I may be, I'm just trying to make sure I'm seeing. It does on the recommended alternative, so it says go to four lane, but then the alternative would be to go to a five lane roadway.
Right.
So you want to just kind of update it to be what, uh, 43?
So I guess we can have discussion of why the plan says what it says and why it was not put in, but at this point, it's, it's in and we're done with it and. If anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but if I'm the only one, then we can probably move on.
I have no questions.
It just, it just seems to me that as, as we go south, it should just be a four lane like from 79th to 55th, just continue that on down.
The only differences I would suggest are a three lane and why this plan suggests a three lane rather than a four is that a three lane is much more efficient than a four. If you think about, well, again, back to Seneca between north of Grand. It's a four lane pavement, just like everything else, and the way it functions is you have the inside lane function as a left turn lane for anybody that wants to turn left. It doesn't really, and you have an extra lane of pavement that you're paying for that's not usually being used. So from a dollars perspective, you're paying for all that extra pavement with, that you really don't need. If you turn that center lane into a two-way left turn lane, then both those lefts, as long as your drive spacing is correct and you're not offset the incorrect way and those cars aren't trying to occupy the same space, a two-way left turn lane is far more efficient and cost effective. Which is why the plan says go to a three lane. The county, for whatever reason, just put in a four lane, the whole stretch. So they paid for all the pavement, so at this point, they've turned it over to us now too, haven't they? For that whole.
Not all the way to 55th, I don't believe.
Okay. But a portion of it at least. They, they built and then turned over to us for, um, maintenance. So now we own all that pavement. We didn't have to pay for it, which is great, but it's not the most efficient use of that real estate.
I know that I've read that, I don't know if it's Sedgwick County or that 95th, they, they want to put a bridge across the river.
Yeah.
And turn that into kind of a southern corridor down there.
Almost, almost like a, a southwest loop of the 96.
Right.
Yeah, and the, I think the bridge over the river at 95th Street is the, one of the only locations that they felt like from whatever study that was that was really viable. Any, anywhere north of there, you really got into portions of Derby that weren't great to have a highway running through it.
Right. So I don't have something to think about in the future if, if that actually happens.
Yeah. But really, it's all going to depend on traffic numbers and if you get south of 79th now, it's, I would guess it's less than 3, 4,000 ADT.
I would think. It might be.
There's not much going on, that's for sure.
I may, I may be the only one in the room that knows what that number means, but it's really low.
I do have one question, Tim, I'd like to present.
Yeah.
And this comes from people in my area and concerns. I, and I want to find out what the priority of it would actually be. On, uh, page 48 of the plan. It's under traffic signalization concern, uh, considerations.
Yeah.
For adding a, a, a traffic signal at 55th and Meridian. What is the actual priority of that with this plan? There's a lot of, there's a lot of children.
Yeah.
That are driving through there that are inexperienced drivers.
Yes.
And there's a lot of homeowners that have to go through there at that certain time also. And a traffic signal instead of a four-way stop would be just exponentially greater and safer.
Yes, and the reason this plan doesn't recommend that is because during that one hour of the day, it would be, it would be far better. But for almost every other hour of the day, a stop sign functions far better. So the county is now planning to put that signal in against what this plan recommended in 2012. The traffic numbers.
Traffic, I mean, because of the school.
Good.
Because of the school. But the reason that, that this plan doesn't recommend that is because when that county puts in that signal that I believe is still unwarranted, you'll pull up to that light for any other of that, and depending on what cycle they turn that into, at least 60 seconds while no one is going in the other direction.
Will we have any kind of input as to, as to scheduling on that signaling device?
No, county's doing it. We have no say at all. Right?
We can recommend, but no say, yeah.
I would, I would recommend somebody look highly at the splits and the max min times and I'm sure they're going to do all that, but. What other questions do we have? Uh, do you need us to have a recommendation?
No, we just need to have in the minutes that we did review it.
Okay. Then without any other discussion, we will move on. Uh, correspondence information or any?
I have none.
None?
None.
Are there any committee updates? No committee updates. All right, nothing off agenda?
Did you want to do any review or wait until next meeting to do that?
We're, sorry. Did I skip that?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. We will return to old business. There's too many items on this agenda.
I mean, if you want to wait.
No.
Um, I think we're still looking at.
Under old business, review of zoning ordinance.
I do have one extra copy that anybody forgot there because that's.
Yes. I need to share with you. Oh, sorry.
Well, I can run downstairs and get one if you want one. So we're, do you have enough to share?
Yeah, we can share.
We should.
Yeah, we're right here. Sorry, we're having, we're sharing notes and having a discussion, which we probably shouldn't. Um, but if you have that question, I would ask it.
Okay, on page 57. And it's referring to manufactured home parks. I didn't see this in here anywhere, Angie, and it may be, but I didn't see it, but I think for future parks going in, that one of the requirements for that park would be to add shelters.
Okay.
Enough shelters for how many?
For reference, you're talking storm shelters?
Yes.
Tornadoes.
Yes.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, not parks, not just picnic area. Storm shelter.
Although property design, it can be you both.
Yeah, I don't, they can use it for a picnic. I don't care, but I want them to be able to have a safe spot for their folks to go.
Any other comments, changes proposed?
So I know we kind of left off talking about minimum or percent of open space. Bulk regulations, my mind's just not there today. And I did a little bit of research, but I don't have enough really to give you any good answers today from what you had asked.
What page were you?
It's not on any page. It was in the recommendations from last meeting about, um, looking at having a maximum use of your property. And you had asked a question about swimming pools, so.
Yeah.
And I have not got to that, but.
Talking about residential.
Yeah.
If I can come back to that if you guys want to move on to the commercials.
Well, you were here last time, right?
No, I'm not.
So the discussion was having a maximum percentage of buildable area on a lot. And if we put a percentage on that, I brought up the point that a pool is technically considered a secondary structure. So if you have a house and a pool, that's going to eat up a pretty large percentage of your lot. And if we talk about, you know, 60% buildable area as a maximum, I would be surprised if a house and a pool on a regular residential lot wouldn't already exceed that. And I, I wanted to make sure that we wouldn't limit something like that by just picking a number arbitrarily that, you know, even if it's 80/20. If we feel strongly enough about having 20% buildable area remain as open space, then that's fine. I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that sheds and pools and all the other stuff that are secondary structures count as, I'm assuming.
What, what, what does it matter as long as you have the space between the boundary?
Well, I think, I think the idea behind limiting buildable, buildable area is green space. And sometimes the front yard can cover whatever that percentage is, but.
Yeah, sometimes.
If you're not, if you're not thinking about it correctly and you think, okay, well, I want to put in a pool, well, you can put in a pool that's, you know, eight by eight and that's it.
Right.
To meet that requirement.
And I guess that was a different issue, nevermind.
I do have a couple of other things now that I look. On page 58, referring to the manufactured home parks also, the under two, the last sentence that says the fence, wall, or landscape buffer. I, I would personally like to take out landscape buffer. I think that creates a problem of someone having to take care of shrubbery or something, so I, I personally would like for it to be a fence or a wall of a, a structure.
You see where?
I see what it is, yeah, just to make sure.
Around, around the, I'm assuming it's around the, like if it butts up to a residential area or.
If that's, uh, something you don't agree with, speak up. Or want to just discuss.
Could, could you go with that again, Debbie?
Okay, it's on page 58, under two, the third paragraph.
Just read the whole thing, so.
It says, currently, it says the fence, wall, or landscape buffer shall be properly policed and maintained by the owner of of the mobile home park. I would like to remove landscape buffer. That to me means like shrubbery around.
You might have trees or something.
Well, here, the first thing is, if you, we can't just remove it from this because then it just means they can have a landscape buffer from the paragraph above, but now they don't have to maintain it, which is not what you want.
So change it to a, a permanent structure, fence or wall.
Uh, I think maybe what everybody else is pausing at is if a landscape buffer is something that we feel is an adequate buffer, then at least this says they have to properly maintain it. And I think the point you're trying to make is you don't think a landscape buffer is an adequate buffer between
True.
A mobile home park and an adjacent
True.
Use, be it residential or commercial or whatever.
Thick evergreen buffer that's tall.
Yeah, I disagree. I'm, I'm with him, like an evergreen buffer or something like that, it's fine.
All right.
As long as they're maintaining it.
And then on page 94. And this refers to the historic district. Under two, conditional uses, I think we should add office space.
Do you have a reason?
I have a reason.
Can we hear it?
Well, I believe the bank is being, um, remodeled for office space right now.
Yes.
So, so we've mentioned antique or art shops, we've mentioned churches, I think just to put in office space.
As a conditional use and not a permitted use?
I, I'm good with either of that. I just think it needs to be included.
It'll be, um, so the confusing thing about this one is this is on top of what zoning's already there, so it's already zoned. Most of those lots are zoned D like commercial, which would allow use. So that's why it's not stated in the permitted use because it's already a permitted use. But some of these that are listed as conditional uses or prohibited uses would just be permitted by right. And so they're saying maybe these need to be with conditions. by right, and so they're saying maybe these need to be with conditions.
Okay, so you think it, that would be covered there?
Yeah, it's already an allowed use, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
But on that one, on the historic committee, I was looking through some of them.
Historic district?
The historic district overlay, yes.
What page?
I feel like maybe...
94.
And this might be for the committee to look at. I feel like art and antique shop would be a good permitted use. I don't know why it would be a conditional use. Same with a restaurant, not that, there's a, well, I suppose Masonic Lodge, maybe.
Well, the whole point in having that conditional use is so that you can add it and put additional conditional requirements on it, right?
Right.
So is there something about art and antique shop that would require you to put it in conditional and not allowed uses?
Well, I could see an antique shop going to a flea market pretty quickly, going down from there.
And it might go to a flea market, but I still don't know that that's not a, if it's, and there's no outside storage, that is stated in here, but if it's still the use, it's
I don't think the historic committee would want a flea market over there.
So to clarify, the difference between an antique shop and a flea market is old stuff instead of new stuff? A flea market would be old and new?
Well, and, and I, a flea market could be, it, it can have clothes, it could, you know, it, it could almost be like a secondhand store.
I'm just, I'm clarifying, so we are all on the same page.
I see an antique store.
In this, in this document, we're okay with antique and art shop, but you're saying we're not okay with a flea market. I want to define what a flea market is for purposes of the discussion. And what I think you're saying is old stuff or new stuff? And the historic district, you've, or do you feel like is appropriate to sell old stuff but not new stuff?
The antique, yes. But not stuff that's just refurbished. I don't know how to explain it.
So if we leave it as conditional...
Then that gives us a choice.
Yes. From it be turning into a flea market, which is what you don't want to have.
And on page 96, a secondhand store is a prohibited use already.
So it sounds to me like maybe we added antique shop and art shop so that a secondhand store was a broad category. We pulled those two out and said this can be a conditional use, more than likely.
It was so long ago.
So the exception to a secondhand shop is antique shop or art shop.
Were adding that or, or adding in the verbiage of, of not wanting to have a, a flea market in there, would that be viewed as, as...
I think it's, I think it's covered in the way of the document. Once you see that a secondhand shop is a prohibited use...
You got what I was saying.
It seems to me like what happened was somebody at that point said, well, what if they want to have an art shop or an antique shop? And so they pulled those two specific uses out of secondhand and put that into conditional use so that they can greater refine that if needed when that time comes.
Yeah, because I just don't want it to be viewed by the public as elitist or something like that, or we're trying to, trying to, to keep something away.
No, I think what, I think what we're talking about is having something appropriate for the historic district.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? So we are going to continue to review, or was that the continuation of our review?
Well, that's, at this point, we were just reviewing the uses and then going back through some of the definitions based on if we made any changes to the uses, so...
And then we get kind of...
If you're done looking at all the usage regulations, I think we could be done for the night and...
We got kind of off track, didn't we? We weren't supposed to be just...
We've jumped a few.
Covering zoning districts.
Yeah.
Okay. Which we really didn't do.
Well, I think, I don't know that we've really looked at or discussed any of the commercial, and maybe there, you don't have any discussion, I don't...
I would say let's leave that for another day and...
Works for me.
I will not recover items seven, eight, and nine, and we'll move directly to item 10.
Move to the chair.
Motion in second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, assume there are no abstentions. Thank you, everybody, for coming.